For. Thank you for being here and we'll start with. Roll call, please.
Oh, President.
I'm here. I know.
Yeah. Trustee.
Yeah.
Trustee.
Here.
Excellent. So now that we're all here, the board reserves the right to change the order of the agenda. May I have an approval of the agenda? Motion to approve.
So. Second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Okay. And now we go to a very special part of our agenda, which is the recognition of our superintendent. And for those of you who don't know, this will be your second to last. This is. Sorry, Dr. Berman, we will have, but it's a very important meeting on the 23rd where we will be. Really on a tentative agreement with our labor partners. However, we wanted to take this opportunity to, we had, we had a celebration that you were invited to. So thank you, those of you who were there, and there were some very kind words said. But I wanted to share that I was one of those board members that showed up during COVID. It was the wild and woolly days of Zoom meetings. And it really was somewhat chaotic. And what I recall most about Dr. Berman's demeanor was her sense of calm and steadfastness and feeling as a new board member that it was going to be okay. So I appreciate that. You also, you know, just came on with enthusiasm and positiveness in your, in your presence, which I think was really important during that time. Because so many of us were, were not in a good state. And, you know, we heard a lot of various opinions about what should happen during COVID, whether we should open or not. But your clarity, which was mentioned before, really helped us through that period. So appreciate that. You're welcome. And this is an opportunity for board members who have made comments, but you certainly can again, as we did do a presentation of a gift that will endure. Yes.
You could always turn it around if you don't like the angry.
So any more members I'm gonna say wish to add?
I'll say I agree. I also learned so much from you, not coming from the educational space. On your wealth of knowledge, your just willingness to answer all my questions and help make sure that I understood the decisions and the ramifications. And really, you know, when there are a lot of complex decisions that sometimes don't have a perfect answer and helping us weigh the pros and cons and understanding the long-term implications. I mean, those are really, you know, when we're sitting in our seat, you kind of look at it from one side and you have this really holistic view of a lot of different angles. And I really always appreciated that context and insights and your best practices. And, you know, I said this earlier, but your kind of moral compass of making sure is it what's best for our students? And it was such a great rounding thought. Every decision is like, okay, is this the best decision first? So incredibly appreciative. So as a mom who never paid attention to board politics, you know, I thought you did a great job, but I did hear a lot of noise about COVID, fire, everything else. And I was so blown away by our, how this went through COVID. You know, even online learning was fantastic. And the fact that we were so flawlessly able to offer in-person learning for anybody else, that was truly impressive. And, and, and just the crisis. And despite that, you got our schools to be in California, distinct school list. Last year, I think. Thank you so much. And I'll miss talking about clothes.
Yeah.
Oh, I was just gonna say, you know, I think I always, as a parent in this district, I always thought, well, yeah, of course, kids first, of course, kids first. But it wasn't until you came along that I actually started saying it. So thank you for that, because it is all about our students. Learning is always first. So I really appreciate that. And I sincerely wish you whatever your message is.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm an introvert and you're an introvert, so I'm gonna save most of my comments for us one-on-one. But I, but I'm just gonna echo that and everything coming into this role, everything that anybody said about you was always 100% front and center. You put students first and you make sure that every kid is accounted for. And so just thank you for providing that North Star for everybody. And thank you for providing a safe space to just come in and ask questions and learn. And I guess to Ellie's point, realize that things are much more complicated than anybody, you know, in any role in this district outside of, outside of this room. You know, you see this one perspective and so you think that's how the world works and that's it. And then you come into this role and you've just helped to educate us all and provide just a great learning opportunity and set a great example. So thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. I will say it's been such a pleasure to work for all of you in this district on behalf of our kids. It's been wonderful to have the partnerships. So many of our PTA individuals are here. And just from that leadership perspective, it was really nice through everything and every decision that we've made to have just investment in our kids and in our school district. And this community has showed up time and time again and has that track record with our $194 million bond and everything else that's on the horizon. I know that things are going in a positive trajectory and it's gonna be wonderful. And I can't wait to continue to read it in the news from afar.
All right. Well, and I, I don't have any public comments in front of me. Is there nothing for this? Okay. See? All right. Jessica Newman, please come on up, Jessica. Come on up, Jessica.
We can just pull that chair up.
Oh, that's good. Yeah.
Nice. Hello. I'm Jessica Newman. I have two kids in the district now arising fifth grader and arising sixth grader now that summer is here. I just wanted to speak for a minute for Dr. Berman's last board meeting. It's been such a pleasure to have you here, both as a parent, as a PTA president, on the Board of Directors of Kido. It's really been an honor to work with you as we work through the Measure G process. I got to know Kimberly very well and it's just clear how dedicated she is to the school district and to the community as a whole. And we really will miss you very much. So thank you for all that you've done for the kids and for the community. And also kudos to you and to Julia. We saw the Old Mill Playground. They broke ground on that today. So my kids are very excited. So thank you and good luck. Thank you.
You're welcome. And now we have some presentations. And the first will be an enrollment presentation from Dr. Rollins. Thank you, Dr. Rollins.
And I'm gonna ask Kate Sprague, our Director of Educational Technology, to join us as well. It's a very. Actually, Kate, I think I'll take the first one. You want to take the second one? And I can be just. Right. So as promised, we had provided some enrollment information to the board on March 9. And then we also followed up on May 24th with the Board of Trustees with enrollment information. So we are bringing back our enrollment planning for 2024 based on information that we have around to thus far. So the first slide that you see is for transitional kindergarten and kindergarten. This is a similar template that you've seen before that shows our historical information. And so for transitional K with round one, we had 87 students. And then during that time between March and June, we had nine students that disenrolled. And then since then, we have also added 10 students. So we basically have a net increase of one student. Again, we'll continue with our round three all the way to the first day of school in August. And we generally see additional drops during the summer and additional adds. But we do anticipate that we'll be projected where we were round one, which is around that 87, 88 number. And then you'll see to the right, based on the class sizes of up to 24 students with a 1 to 12 adult student ratio for transitional kindergarten, that would be 96 students. And for kindergarten, that would be 240 students. So just looking at the second line there for kindergarten, in March, we had 215 students. We dropped, not dropped, but they disenrolled 15 students. They either decided to go to private school, parochial school, or they've moved out of the area. And we've added 16 students. So again, a net increase of one student. And so if based on class sizes of 240 for, I'm sorry, 24 for 10 classes is 240 students. Back, excuse me, back at the March 9th board meeting, the board did discuss that if class sizes averages were at 23, 24 district-wide, that there would be consideration for reviewing class counts. So just to give you those numbers for TK, class size average of 23, 24 district-wide would be 94 students. So we would need to be at 95. And then for kindergarten, it would be 235 or 236 is where the board had looked at that for the March 9th board meeting. And then also affirmed that at the May 24th board meeting. And then just the information below on this chart you've seen before, it was presented at March 9th on the March 9th meeting. So I'm gonna let Kate, we just have one more slide and then we'll recap and we can certainly go back and answer questions.
So the second slide here just shows the first grade 2023 projected enrollment based on the 22, 23 kindergarten enrollment rolling into first grade and then what we've seen in rounds one and round two. So the 22, 23 K is 221 students. Then in round one, we had new to the district, six students, so a gain of six students to that 221. And then we had student waitlist moves within the district of five students. So those are students who are already captured in the current K class. And then in round two, we had one new to the district student and we did have two students who disenrolled. So we landed on 226 students that you see represented in those class projections on, in the table to the right.
And then the next slide basically is the same slide that the board has seen at the March 9th board meeting. And the board did provide direction to follow the Mill Valley School District recommendations. And so you'll see those there with the affirming the Universal Transitional K Assembly Bill 22 with the eligibility dates. And transitional K and kindergarten maintaining the 1 to 24, I'm sorry, the 1 to 24 ratio with an adult student ratio of 1 to 12. And so four TK classrooms and 10 kinder classrooms. First grade, the board did have the additional first grade class at Town Valley. And newly enrolled students would be placed at the schools with the lowest class enrolled by grade. And then lastly, there was a fourth grade addition to Edna McGuire School and with the role of the third grade sections to four fourth grade sections at Edna McGuire, resulting in a class size average of just under 21. And then most recently, at the May 24th board meeting, when we provided the preliminary budget and the assumptions for our adopted budget, and just affirming the classroom configurations, maintain the budget for the number of classrooms, including the changes for first and third grade at Town Valley and the first grade, I'm sorry, Edna McGuire and first grade at Town Valley. And then also to maintain a minimum of two classroom grades at each school site, ensuring that all schools in the district remain. So we're happy to answer questions. Kate and I have both reviewed all the round one and round two.
We also do have some public comments. So why don't we entertain those and then we ask questions? Thank you. So Alex Duval, it looks like we'll have three minutes each. Scott Ellison and Patty Robbins are coming.
I don't even think we're gonna need three minutes. Oh, each for all of us to talk or we're all coming up to make it easier for you.
That sounds.
Yeah.
Let's do.
We like to streamline things.
Yes. And then we have Krista Wilson, Shannon Kidwell and Gail May. Okay, all are.
Yep, there you go. Up and over.
Thank you.
So we have three minutes all together or we can mush some of our time together?
Um.
One minute per speaker?
A total of six minutes for all three of us.
Okay, that's.
Okay with you guys. Okay. Just for introductions, I'm Patty Robbins.
I'm Alex Duval.
I'm Scott Ellison. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Yeah, the three of us are all parents of rising first graders at Edna McGuire. The group of us have appeared at prior board meetings. Please know that we are representing a much larger group of concerned parents as reflected by the class size petition that we shared previously with 158 signatures. We are here today to reiterate a few key reasons why the board should reinstate the third kindergarten and first grade classrooms at Edna. This would be the most equitable approach. The board's current plan results in 19 students per first grade class at TAM and 23 at Edna. Those four additional students make a real difference in the classroom. The board felt that 24 kids per class at TAM was too many. And we would hope for a similar sentiment in regards to Edna and for a similar decision to be made to add a third class back as a result. The kindergarten enrollment preferences support a third kindergarten and therefore a third first grade class at Edna as well. We found more than 15 families who requested Edna for kindergarten but got placed elsewhere. And we already know of families who are choosing private school as a result. We know there are no neighborhood schools, but proximity to the school is one important factor in school placement. So it is relevant that the request for Edna is not just from TK families who lived in the homestay or TAM area. We know of at least three families who live in the neighborhood right by Edna who did not get in, even though it was previously stated that all nearby families had been admitted. Regardless of the decision regarding kindergarten for next year, maintaining three first grade classes at Edna at least gives these waitlisted families a chance to join Edna in the following school year in 2024 to 25.
And we saw that the updated data that was just presented for first grade and kindergarten student enrollment. It supports the addition of classes at Edna as well. At the March 9th meeting, several board members stated that they wanted to revisit this topic for Edna when round two enrollment came in with several members in the district office saying that enrollment may decrease. Well, the numbers are here now and actually seven new students have entered into the first grade pool for the district and only two left. So that's a net increase of five students, which does make a material difference. And in fact, the average class sizes has crept up from 19.5 kids per class to 20.5 students per class now. So if a third first grade class was added at Edna, both TAM and Edna would have 17 to 18 kids per class, which provides great flexibility for two schools with learning centers. And it makes sense to have two schools across town with these room for new students instead of having one school nearly a capacity at 23 kids per class, which is much higher than the others. I know that the district doesn't want inequity among the schools, which they say would happen if TAM and Edna were at 18 kids per class versus Old Mill, for example, at 22, which is a difference of four students. But that's no different than what the current situation is right now, which how we would have TAM at 19 students and Edna at 23. It's a similar four student variance. And during the March 24th board meeting, it was stated that the first grade class sizes at Town Valley, before those new students were added, that it was at 15 to 16 students per class, but that was not the case. Looking at the numbers in the presentation with the accepted inter-district transfers, the board agreed to add a third first grade class at TAM on the condition that five students were transferred to TAM, which would yield a 17 to 18 student class size at TAM there, not 15 to 16. The board said that if Edna was granted the third first grade class as well, the class size would be 15 to 16 kids there, which we understand is lower than what you prefer. But since then, five new students have enrolled in the district. And if they were placed at Edna, there would be 17 to 18 kids per class there. So if that was an acceptable class size then for Town Valley, why wouldn't it be acceptable for Edna McGuire? Additionally, the kindergarten numbers have slightly increased since round one. As we presented in the last meeting, if even just half of the families that were given their first choice and a third kindergarten class was added at Edna, it would provide an extremely equitable scenario across the district with 17 to 18 students per class. This would provide a stable situation for students, teachers and families across the district.
We feel that it's short-sighted to eliminate a first grade classroom at Edna. There are three talented educators who've been teaching first grade together at Edna for 14 years. And with new housing under development right by Edna, we're likely to see even higher demand for the school in the coming years. This is not the right time to eliminate classrooms and disrupt the awesome first grade teaching team. It's the board's stated priority to keep class sizes small in the primary grades. But we haven't seen much of a difference in class sizes between upper and lower grades at Edna. In fact, it appears that the district office's recommendations have been based on budgetary interests. It may need to max out class sizes before recommending to add a new classroom. The district office's recommendation to eliminate a first grade classroom at Edna was therefore directly at odds with the board's education-oriented policies. Now that you've reached a tentative agreement with the MBTA, yay! Which includes salaries, the budget option should be more clear for all of us. We ask that you take a student-first approach and use the available funds to help these pandemic-era kids get the education they deserve. As just one example from the current budget, there could be a significant savings if school supplies were only provided free for families who needed them or requested them, as opposed to all students in the district. We are asking you to add back a third class for first grade and think about kindergarten also at Edna based on the most updated enrollment data. Edna is the newest school and it has the teachers and classrooms to support adding back a third grade class. Class sizes at 22 to 23 leave little to no flexibility for new families or families with siblings, which I know is a priority for at least one of our board members. Three classes at Edna and TAM would allow for flexibility and enable more families to be placed at their desired schools across the entire district. Thank you for considering our comments.
Thank you. And now Krista Wilson. Krista?
Just in case you don't have graphics that I emailed everyone. I. A thousand words of why. Please. Okay. Yeah, thank you again for taking the time to hear us. Oh, yeah.
And identify who you are.
I'm Krista Wilson. I have Ayla Wilson, who's an incoming kindergartner. And we're, I shared last week that we're on the, on the waitlist, but also wanna share more today on why 11 classes for kindergartners really makes the most sense. So thanks again for taking the time to hear us. Please genuinely listen to the information and think about how you would feel if it was your kid coming in. I, and I wrote this in an email, but I'll say it live now. So 11 classes for kindergartners would be much more fair across all of our district, more equitable and a lot more optimal for several reasons. So from 2015 to 2023, the average class size for K to three is 20 kids. Adding another kindergarten class for a total of 11 classes would make that average 20 kids the same in line with the rest of the district, what the rest of the district is getting today and in the past. That 22 average is the same level as last year that we acknowledged caused harm and was not best for our children. So and based on the historical numbers, it's likely that we'll get more children in August, based on the past two years, and inevitably have a class of 23 or 24. We're a well-funded district and investing in small class sizes and great teachers should really be our number one priority. What is more important than having a class size of 20, which is the fair equitable, what is happening across historically all of the other grades? Why are we asking for our kindergartners, our youngest, like most vulnerable age, to have a class size of 22 that we know caused that harm this year? There must be room in our budget to ensure that this is fair and a good experience for our children. I'm sure we must be able to find areas. We've heard about the meeting materials. I'm sure parents, I, I can't imagine a parent not being willing to pay for materials over having a, what we know is a best class size for our kindergartners. And I'm sure we've also heard that their internal, you know, external consultants cost a lot. Can we bring those in? There must be room in the budget for, for this, for one more kindergarten class. In terms of where the classes should be, I've spoke with many waitlisted families and almost all had Edna or TAM and would be much happier with either of them. So my, myself included, and you guys would know that where the greatest demand is. Every logical, emotional, research-based fairness reason is pointing to 11 kindergarten classes. Please listen to all of your constituents that you've heard us like over and overcome here and do what's best and what's most fair for our 200 incoming kindergartners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now Shannon Kidwell. Shannon?
Hello, board. Dr. Berman, my name's Shannon Kidwell. I, I'm a mother of a rising second grader and a rising kindergartner at TAM. Because Town Valley has three first grades, thank you, and serves a large geographical area, we're requesting that third kindergarten class be added back to reduce class size to 20 or below across the district. There were at least 10 families that we have identified that were put on the waitlist at TAM. Almost 20% of the families living in Town Valley did not get into TAM. I know Edna is in a similar position as well as other parents have spoke. I'm speaking on TAM because I'm familiar more with that subject. Adding to kindergarten, adding three kindergartens will also reduce the class size of all the other schools as well. We understand that there's been declining enrollment across the district in years past, but that does not appear to be the case this year for the kindergarten as the numbers are identical to last year's kindergarten class, 216, 217 at this point. This last year, the kindergarten of 216 at the end of the second round was divided into 10 classes. It was very evident that the 10 classes was not enough as soon as the school year started. And that was acknowledged by the board on the March 9th meeting when you approved the addition of 11th class as they move into first grade. These amazing kindergarten teachers were overwhelmed and exhausted daily. And many parents reported that their children were not thriving. To say it was a less than ideal year is an understatement. As a room parent who witnessed these same kindergarten teachers just one year before in a class of 19, full of energy every day, able to support each child, not asking for any volunteers, I can assure you that this past year was an issue of sheer numbers. And here we are again in the same position as last June, with the same number of children signed up for kindergarten. And yet the recommendation is for only 10 classes. I think we're all familiar with the quote, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results." Please, let's do the right thing by adding one or two kindergarten classes back in now for the teachers, for the parents. But really, as Sharon said and as Natalie said earlier at the beginning of the meeting, please put our kids first. Thank you.
And now we have Gailam May, please, Gailam.
Hi, this is my first time trying to be, and sorry, but I'm Gailam May. I have a, just finished TK at Edna. He's currently gonna be at Edna for kindergarten, but on the waitlist at TAM. Really, really thinking passionately about the 11 kindergarten classrooms for next year. I mean, we saw that it didn't work this year for the 10, only having 10 kindergartens. Let's not do that again. Let's try to have 11 classes. You know, I, I know there's a lot of, you know, the Edna TAM, you know, I know there's a lot of people who are, want to go to TAM who are on the, who currently at Edna too. So that like, either way, if we, if I got off the waitlist, that means more people at Edna too. All those different scenarios, but just really consider the 11 classes. It's only 20, it's an average of 20. You know, and the email in April said, you know, if there were 23 kids in a class, they would open up a third, an 11th classroom. But the numbers today where it said that it had to be 236 in order to make an average of 23 kids seems inconsistent with how you calculate 20, you know, the averages for, for all the other classes. So, yeah, I just really want you to consider that 11th classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I think we have no more comment on this item. Okay. So we are, you're not asking for any, there's no action on this item, but we.
So what, do we have any 24 kids in any of the kindergarten classes? No. So it's 23 and can you, can you be honest with the distribution of how many there are, like numbers?
And for kindergarten?
Yeah.
So right now it's based on the 200. I don't have that information.
Yeah, but we don't have any class that's over 23 or 24.
No, because right now, based on round one, we're at 200. Yeah, so every class is under 22, 22 or below.
Okay. And can I also ask, what's the per student spending in our district versus Sausalito and, and, and Reed? I hear a lot lower. I think we're at 20 in Sausalito and Reed are 25, right? They are. I, I checked Sausalito and Reed, so we're about 20,000, right?
And so as we actually, I can pull that up.
Yeah. We're like around 21 or 20. We're a lot lower than Sausalito and Reed. So, you know, and it's because our tax base is a lot lower than Sausalito and Reed. Because I think our average tax rate is 1.3 million, our median is 1.1. So it's not as great as.
You're getting at how much we actually have to spend for student.
Yeah, we're not as high as other districts. But before we, you know, negotiate. But before we, you know, negotiated with the MBTA, how much money will we projecting to lose this year besides the, you know, the restricted spending? So it was about five hundred thousand dollars of deficit before MBTA agreement, right?
So I don't think I'm following you, but I'll.
There's a one point five million dollars, you know.
Oh, restricted care. That is correct.
Excluding that, it's about five hundred thousand dollars of deficit spending.
Correct.
Right? And how much will MBTA cost next year?
And for all staff, it's three point, it's three point three million.
So we will be in deficit for about three million dollars next year, right? And and we will be spending down our reserves from thirteen million dollars unrestricted to a lot less than that in two, three years, right?
Yes, and I wanted to answer your first question first. So the unotted actuals for twenty-one, twenty-two, because we have not closed out this fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, our first student spending was twenty-one thousand two four four.
Yeah.
So I don't have the information for Reed.
Twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, I'm a student. And I I looked at that chart.
And I think we looked at, I believe it was the May tenth board meeting, we looked at their, in particular Reed, we looked at their assessed valuation or tax base, and it is significantly higher than our tax base. At Reed.
Yeah, so I just had a clarifying question, and it's just math. I'm sorry, the Kinder, we, you know, have the first grade data up there. We have two hundred and sixteen round two. So if I divide two hundred sixteen by ten, I get roughly twenty-one point six kids, right?
Correct. So that's twenty-two or below.
Okay, thank you. I see. Yeah.
And and another question I wanted to ask classroom size is what are the plans if we get, how many, how many kids do we get over the summer until the school year last year?
It's hard to say because there were adds and drops.
Right. So it's this information.
Yeah, would you mind going back? One more slide. I think it's on the first slide. Yeah, that one there.
There you go. So since, so there's actually.
So when you usually see a drop at this point, we actually see a plus one game. Do we know? So, okay, um, last year, the round two June was two seventeen. Okay, so the start of August was two twenty-two. Do we know what the ending number was? Because kids move in during the year.
Last year?
This year, that just ended on Friday. Do we know what the number of kindergarteners were? It started with.
Two twenty-one.
Two twenty-one, so we lost a student. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's on my second page.
Yeah, that it's the.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm just wondering, you know, I always hear like teachers don't, and they always end up with more kids at the end of the year. I've heard that a few times.
So for Kinder, I think we'll be down too.
And do you have any classrooms at Edna to add a first grade? Because my understanding is you have TK classes, so you are.
First grader or kindergarten.
Or kindergarten. Right?
So kindergarten, there are five that are specifically for TKK, and so those are all occupied.
Yeah.
And when we're looking at an additional classroom, if our enrollment increases significantly for TK or K, it would likely be at Stradivarius or TAM.
Because of lack of classroom.
And because there are requirements with our facilities, I'm kind of looking out there for Julio. There are facilities requirements based on square footage, access to restrooms, size of facilities, and in terms of accessibility of the restrooms, playground structures. I mean, there's a lot to consider when adding a TK or K classrooms, not just the space availability and based on classroom count. So there are considerations that Julio, our Director of Maintenance Operations and Safety, fully evaluates before recommendations whatfor.
So I would actually be more more concerned about ensuring that there was an appropriate classroom for TK. I don't know what the chances are that we're going to have that, you know, in influx of what would that be? Eight more kids in or nine, nine additional TK kids into the district, but if we're sticking at the eligibility that we agreed on before, then we are required to serve those kids if those nine came into the district and required to keep it at below twenty-four, whereas, you know, worst case scenario, which would be worst case scenario, then we have the flexibility to go over with the other grades. So I think that would be the priority from a classroom standpoint.
Yes, and I'd like to add to that, you know, I I'm still doing more research, but the the National Association for the Education of Young Children does identify preschool, meaning transitional kindergarten, one to ten ratio or max of twenty. And we do know is that, is that correct? That there is some talk of changing the
Well, that's right. There's an instructional system there, and the adult student ratio is one to twelve.
Right.
There was some discussion early on with the governor's January proposal to look at evaluating that adult to student ratio, but they did not push that forward.
They didn't push it forward. Okay, but I just wanted to echo what you're saying, Trusty Cats, that I think the TK consideration that you mentioned is is well, is well placed.
Thank you. And I think just, just to clarify, my my focus is just on ensuring from a classroom standpoint, like a facility standpoint, that we have the facilities for that, because if we went, if we had nine come in over the course of the summer, then we would have to add that extra classroom. We wouldn't have a choice but to do that. So, you know, so ensuring that, you know, should that happen, that we have the facilities available to serve those kids on a different note, I'm looking back at your beautiful rainbow chart from before, and just looking at since twenty fifteen, the historical class size enrollment and the highs in kindergarten over one, two, three, four, five, there were really only, oh, sorry, there are two exceptions. But other than that, five of those years, the high was twenty-four in kindergarten class during your time in Mill Valley. Have there been concerns raised with twenty-four kids in a class prior to this year?
No, and I'm actually looking out for Jason at Old Mill because they have consistently, Old Mill and Park traditionally in the past have had class sizes of twenty-four, twenty-four in kindergarten, and and many have held through kindergarten first grade all the way through third grade.
And I want to add as a old mill parent, we had in fourth grade exceptionally high, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and you know, sometimes it matter, you want to, you want your child to be walking distance. And so, you know, there's just so many different variety of needs per per individual, and I don't want to discount the the heartfelt and relevant public comment we've heard tonight, but I I personally feel that with a new superintendent, there might be opportunity to revisit this whole process, but in for the time being, we surely have a clear direction and I think it's very helpful that we've had ongoing public comment to keep our mind open, but unless there are any other questions, I'd add to the next item. Okay.
One, one quick question. Well, the comment really. So this is clearly a hot button issue, you know, in a way. And our next board meeting is not till August tenth, so is there a way for the board to be informed of any changes to for this situation now till then? I don't want to find out on August seventh of any significant change, so.
Round three will go all the way through the first day of school. I mean, they continue to register students all the way past Labor Day, so. You know, we can certainly.
But maybe just a midsummer check-in, I feel.
Our meeting, our first meeting was before school.
Yeah, okay. If that's enough, then that's okay, but I just want to, I want to make sure we're apprised if there's significant changes.
And then Trusty Cats, I wanted to answer a question. So for next year, we only will have one class with twenty-four. Everything else will be. Old Mill.
That's okay. Yeah, because they've always said, can I, my son had twenty-three when he was a kindergarten kid. Twenty-three or twenty-four. I was pretty normal. Understanding that things have changed. Quick question, are we getting any money from the state to start this kindergarten? Because if Newsom says, oh, it has to be twelve and one or ten and one. Is he giving us more money or is it spent?
That's a great question. We discussed that at our budget workshop. We received no money, and so I'll just, not to be negative, but Lars McCord Madera does not operate a universal transitional kindergarten program because of the cost. There, there are no funds that support this. And so it is something that districts individually consider with their boards. And we did not have TK for, you know, a few years as well because of the lack of funding. We wanted to bring it back this year, and I know that Reed District also, for the first time, is running a TK program. But to answer your question directly, there are zero funds as a basic A community funded district to support the next year, which will be the four full-time equivalent teachers and four six-hour stretch rates. So there, there's no funding from the state for those classes.
And so let me do my math clear. So does your next year's budget include one extra, two extra TK as the enrollment period exceeds? So we could be potentially looking at literally, we, we right now, we're about twenty and a half, three million dollar deficit each year until our assessments increase to offset that. So we're looking at potentially going down from thirteen million dollars of unrestricted fund besides the pension fund and whatever, going down to five, six million, right, over the next two, three years, right, possibly.
Potentially, what I would say is we have put in our projections, one full-time equivalent teacher for next year to anticipate an additional universal transitional kindergarten class. Given the eligibility period, it's an additional two months, Kate.
I don't remember.
Yeah, it's either two or three months, but what I'll say is we know that we started with the three, we've added another class.
Oh, the eligibility of the eight. Yes, two additional months. Yeah, April to June.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Kate and I are laughing because our both middle kids didn't get TK because the program was eliminated, and now we miss it by the eligibility.
Yeah.
Let us know how awesome the program.
Yes.
I know it's heartbreaking when you get a, say, my kid missed it by a day because her labor lasted long and I'm.
It's, I mean, yeah, neither of us will have kids in TK for that.
Although, although I think that our kids have managed, our older kids have all managed well, we didn't get the benefit of TK, but it seems like an amazing program and I I just want to thank you for your questions and comments around the budget and highlighting that because I think we've also heard lab and clear, not just on the importance of small class sizes, but in valuing our teachers and having them feel valued and compensated well and provided for and retaining the great teaching staff that we have. And so I think we know that we have to make some tough choices in certain places. And so I think at the end of the day, I don't feel like this is that that we're making any significant trade-offs that compromise anything for students. I think that the numbers where we're at right now feel very reasonable, and it's all relative to your own personal experience. So people can disagree with me if they want. But but I think that, you know, our amazing teachers are going to just move forward with flying colors and supporting the students and you know, and I I think we've been able to work with it and do the best we can. So appreciate all the work that you've been putting into it and looking at the numbers and trying to balance all the things that are, you know, that are on our plates, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I hear on the smaller classroom size post pandemic, but I think if we visit this issue in August and see classroom sizes won't increase. And 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 another thing I know, I've done a lot of research into this recently after all this thing started. And studies have shown that you know, it's, it's classroom sizes do matter for underprivileged kids, but then everything else being equal, it's really the quality of teachers. And I think, you know, we have really one of the best. You know, we really have amazing teachers in our district, and I think hopefully, you know, whatever decision we make about the kindergarten classroom size next year, and we're leaving the door open in case there are a lot more kids coming into the district. I think, you know, our teachers will do an amazing job. I mean, I think that's what we decided to prioritize at the end of the day.
Thank you, Trustee. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And onward to our next presentation, agreements for consulting services, Laura Myers. You'll come on up, Laura.
Watching it from the Zoom. Gotcha.
There she is. Thank you, Laura, for coming back.
You are welcome.
Alrighty.
So, board requested an update on the professional development survey, and so I brought that back. And you can see we sent the survey to all of the MBTA members, which are one hundred and seventy-six point eight. The point eight is FTE, not a human being. A hundred and two people responded, which is fifty-eight percent. Twenty-six of those were middle school. Five were district-wide and seventy-one were elementary. So they had choices as far as what type of professional development they're interested in. And so the top three were outside presenters, and so that was first. Ed camp, which is kind of like a workshop model, was second, and having internal teacher leaders was third. And on the next slide. So then we looked at the top three interests, general subject areas. And so if you add up, the graph on the left shows if you add up all of the top three, fifty-seven teachers chose ELA, structured literacy, forty-six chose math, and forty-eight chose supporting diverse student needs, which is special ed and differentiation strategies. There were a bunch of comments, but some that came up more often than not was a desire to work with Tanisha Tate Austin again, which we previously approved the contract for. That the middle school really wants professional development that's tailored to their subject matter and that the specialized team has interest in specific like updates on legal and compliance issues. And that is the professional development survey overview.
Thank you. Board members, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I just think hundred eight is only not, not a lot. Teachers will participate more, so we have better samples at default, but, you know.
Actually, typical sample, it's pretty good for a typical sample size of a survey, but I know what you're saying.
No, but, but.
Any survey.
It's not a parent thing, right? It's teachers. I, I, I wish that we engage more because this directly affects the awards. Yeah.
Any other questions, questions?
Comment, it's, it sounds like the priorities from the responses are in line with supporting Glein and continuation of work with Leo and the math committee. I would really hate with ongoing work that we've seen to be really successful and benefiting benefiting students, which we've heard from like the T L presentation and the work that the TOS has been doing and our teachers have been doing. And then with the math committee, this is something that is ongoing, that we're looking to have consistent results and support and common form of assessments for students across the district. So I think this is stuff that's continuing to move in a great direction, and I'd hate to do anything that would compromise that. And I think we've gotten a lot of, a lot of communication throughout the course of the year, but also recently from people who've been doing the work directly with Leo at least, just saying how amazingly that's gone and how transformational it's been. So I imagine that as you continue work like this, that that then spreads out further beyond just that core group that's starting.
So I consulted with Elizabeth, and I think, right, am I, I don't want to word it in my mouth, but it seems like she's generally supportive of us continuing with the work we've been doing.
Well, I wanted to ask, you know, we, most contracts, you know, these contract, but it's ever evolving and and it's tailor-made as time goes on. I'm assuming that's going to continue. Yeah.
Well, so, go ahead. So regarding the contract, so I mean, it's clear that there's movement already, as you said, Trusty Cats.
Just in cats. Um, and it's, it's it's been very, very helpful. It's been helpful to our students and it's been helpful to some of our teachers, not all of our teachers. So I guess the question is, how do we see, how do we ensure that all of our teachers have access to the PD that not necessarily they want, everyone can't always have what they want, but how do we offer, um, you know, for example, the middle school, you know, wanting specific to their needs, like, so we're spending a lot of money um, for certain people to get great benefits from that. Translates to our students. So I think for the math, it might take a while, like the math is in the elementary schools right now, but if we get better horizontal alignment, it might take three or four years, but the middle school will eventually see that, I think, is kind of the okay. So, but in the meantime, um, while we're waiting for that and, you know, how do we help our other staff who's saying like, hey, I didn't participate in any of these because I'm a seventh grade student, I'm making this up. Not the seventh grade center, since you didn't say this, but I'm making it up, you know, so, um, how do we meet their their professional development too? It's kind of a, just a, not, I'm not looking for an answer right now, but I think it's just I can say one thing to that, and that is that, um, survey goes to all TK eight teachers. And so last year, for example, the middle school teachers overwhelmingly asked for SEL work. They wanted trauma-informed, um, practices. And so that's what we provided for them as a district, um, and for their professional development. So saying it here because it's Glee, it's math and Right, we've already, so we already, um, approved Sam Drazen's contract and Tanisha's contract for TK eight. And so this is um, specific to literacy, these two contracts are specific to literacy and math. Um, and you're absolutely right that right now we're working on horizontal alignment. And so that is something where we've heard, um, interest and it comes up every few years, some interest for vertical articulation between our fifth grade teachers and our sixth grade, um, teachers around math and ELA and all of that. Um, we were talking, uh, the administrators were talking today about some possibilities of what that might look like. Um, there's always interest in eighth grade to ninth grade, working with TAM and our other high school districts. Um, but for now, our as I said at the last meeting, our middle school math department is highly aligned. It doesn't mean that their practices couldn't be looked at or examined or whatever, but they're highly, highly aligned. And elementary is not. And so the first step really is to build that alignment. Um, regarding, so with, uh, the math contract, um, one, one thing that did bother me a little bit was that it was between thirty-five and fifty-five days of work and it's a set amount to be built monthly. So I don't know if there's any flexibility in that where, you know, if I, I, I'm just wondering if there's any flexibility in that kind of contract with that language saying like, well, what I know, I know a good job wouldn't be done, but still. It's really, it, it came down to for these past two years, a, um, as like, for instance, the teachers asked for a math masters program. And so then we developed that. And so those were additional, that was additional time with Leo that we didn't initially um, schedule. And so it's that kind of flexibility. He's incredibly flexible, although he is filling up his time with other school districts. So that flexibility might lessen a little bit as time goes on. Um, but, um, he has been pretty flexible with, we could use another day, could you go into classrooms and model mathematical workshops or mathematical mindset lessons? Um, or we're gonna not do this day. And so then we pull back on a day. So he's pretty flexible in that sense. And then with the Gleene contract, um, I noticed that, uh, she had written that she did basically a hundred hours of the work. Um, I couldn't, but I think, I feel like her contract last year was for sixty-eight thousand, it was for a lot less. So I can't tell from the way the contract's written because it's, it talks about workshops, it doesn't talk about the number of hours, if that's essentially doubling for this year because Um, it's, it's so it's, it is more time and it's also different. So for example, this year in the contract, there's a possibility of Orton Gillingham training, which I was looking up today. So it's anywhere like if an individual teacher were to do that same training without the follow-up practicum of her and her team being able to come into the classrooms for ten weeks or six weeks afterwards, um, to support the learning just alone is, um, anywhere between fifteen hundred to three thousand per person. So this is, um, one example is we're adding in the possibility for Orton Gillingham training, which was not reflected up here, but was reflected in the surveys. Yeah. Um, and so that, um, so that's an additional unit. Um, and, and it's really expanding the, the work with Gleene started initially with administrators and then it was administrators and TOSs. And it's slowly growing and spreading, kind of similar, um, to what we were talking about before, is like leading out to, that's a terrible phrase, but spreading out to more and more teachers and more staff to, to impact more students. So then the, the, the upper grade teachers that maybe didn't get the benefit last year will see it this year. If the middle school, um, ELA teachers want that, but yes. Elementary. Yes, yeah. So there's, yeah, there's been definitely a desire for us to differentiate between like K two and three, five, and we can absolutely do that.
Well, may I have a motion to?
So moved.
All in favor? I opposed. All right, it passes. Thank you very much. And now we're going to move to public comment on non-agenda items. Uh, the board will allow thirty minutes, but I don't, we don't have any public So.
I'd like to comment on something. I don't know if I'm doing this perfectly. I may have missed part of the, uh, the school placement that.
Yeah, it's, it, so it's, do you have an agenda and you fill out a form to speak?
Give that, I arrived at five o'clock because I have a full-time job and so.
If you, you can speak on something that's not on the agenda at this moment.
Okay.
Or you can fill out a form for anything that we haven't covered yet that is on the agenda.
Got it. Okay. Where can I find one of those?
All right, in the back there, yes. And that may become relevant momentarily. But first, we're going to introduce Erin Fraish. We are at, um, because I do believe his comment might be on an item on the agenda. Let's, let's wait for a moment. Yes, and I'm not sure I, if he's, it's on the agenda or off the agenda at the moment. So let's find out. So is your comment on an agenda item that we have on the agenda or is it?
It is on, I guess it could be, it's about, it's about placements to various, so.
So that's, that's a non-agenda item. So come on up. Yeah. And yes, if you can fill, please, and if you fill one of those out after, then we so if you can identify who you are
Sure.
and which school you're with, and then you have three minutes in which to share your comments.
Great, thank you. Um, my name's Alex Procaro. I am the father of an entering kindergartner. Um, who has been placed at Park. And I just wanted to speak on, I guess, two things. Having gone through the, like, the first round placement. And the first is just to, I missed, I think, maybe some other comments, but wanted to add another voice of support behind a third kindergarten class at TAM. And I think with there, I, I, you all know this very well, I'm sure, but we're blessed to have very good schools across the district, but geography is very important for working parents. And so, um, among all the other factors, I just want you to understand the hardship that can occur for people, particularly dual, you know, working households of, you know, having to drive twenty minutes across town to drop a kid at a non-school. Um, so I wanted to make sure that you are taking that into account, which I'm sure you are. Second thing is that I was looking at the enrollment update, which was not the most recent, I don't think, but the one with the rainbow charts. And, and I don't know if everybody reads this the way that I do, but the way that I read it is that this year for kindergarten, but at least going back to twenty fifteen, this is the year with the highest average. So it's tied for the highest average kindergarten class size and also the highest, um, high-end kindergarten class size. And that pretty clearly is directly correlated with the elimination of the third kindergarten class at Tam Valley. So setting aside all the arguments about class size, eh, there is a pretty fair correlation there. And I think if you also look in that presentation later on, I don't know if everybody reads this the same way, but if a third kindergarten class were added at TAM, it would very quickly attract a number of candidate, a number of students from other schools, which seems to be based on the, the district's own numbers. A really clear indication that TAM is in very high demand for incoming kindergartners. And so I just wanted to express that there are real people and real families behind this who were hoping that their child could go to their neighborhood school. And for whatever demographic reasons, this year, there are a lot of people who wanted to have kids at Tam Valley who who ended up not getting that. So just wanted to share those thoughts. Um, and also thank you guys for your service as an entering parent.
Thank you very much. And yes, if you fill that out.
Sure.
Have all your information appreciated. Alrighty, now let us um, invite Mill Valley Teachers Association reps up for their.
We got a big, big deal today. We got a new MBTA rep. Bringing her own chair. Um, good afternoon. Oh, just my everywhere. It's totally fine. Thank you. Um, I'm very pleased to be joined tonight by Julie Bremmer, who is our new MBTA co-president. If you don't already know Julie, you will love getting to know her. So welcome Julie and thank you.
True, Julie.
Thank you. Um, we wanted to start by saying thank you to Dr. Berman, um, for your years of service in our district. Dr. Berman, we wish you well on your next adventure and thank you for your time and dedication that you've given to the Mill Valley School District. Thank you.
Um, we're also happy to report that, as you know, we were able to reach a tentative agreement with, uh, the school district's bargaining team last Friday. And we wanted to thank all of you for your support. Thank you so much for your support in reaching an agreement and for listening to all of our members at the many, many board meetings this spring. It's been a, a long season and you all listen to a lot of us. So thank you so much for the time and dedication to that effort. Um, we also want to thank the district's bargaining team, Dagmar Derrickson, Michelle Rollins, Danny Chu, Jason Matlin and Roman Munoz. Um, and thank you to Sid for spending so many hours taking notes and for creating our lunch orders. Thank you so much. Um, MBTA members are really pleased to be going into the summer with an agreement that will provide a significant increase to staff salaries as well as increased support for teachers and students in the classroom. So thank you all very much.
In the spring of each year, district administration, MBTA leadership and certificated staff work together to make a plan for the following year's professional development. For several years, this has taken the form of a survey that is sent to certificated staff to identify the areas of interest in the next year. And then our director of curriculum and instruction makes a plan for the upcoming PD days. This year, this survey showed interest from certificated staff in continuing professional development in the areas of ELA, math and supporting diverse student learning needs. There was a comment tonight about a teacher particip-, or teacher participation in the annual PD survey. And, and one idea could be a change in practice. Currently, teachers are asked to take the survey on their own time at the very end of the school year. It would be possible to get a hundred percent participation if that time was given in a staff meeting to complete it. Last week, the topic of PD contracts arose and there was an interest expressed by the board in learning more about the effectiveness of this year's PD and the interest from certificated staff and continuing on with the same contractors. MBTA leadership collaborated with certificated staff to put out a second survey, the results of which we have sent to, to review. The big takeaways that we found from the survey are that certificated staff would like the opportunity to be more involved in the planning of PD. And would like PD to be differentiated um, based on the areas of interest and need. We have spoken to Laura Myers about continuing our work together to solicit feedback from certificated staff on a regular basis about PD so that we can best support Mill Valley students.
And that's all. We wish you all a very restful summer and we want to thank you again for all of the hours that you've put in this year um, at board meetings and outside of the board meetings in the interest of supporting our district and our students. So your work and dedication to our district is very much appreciated. Thank you and have a great summer.
Listening to you. Oh, F, approval of the consent agenda. So
So moved, yeah.
And a second? All in favor? Yes, the normal qualification. Alright. Seeing that we have no items removed, H will go on to JHI, excuse me, for the operations, resolution eighteen twenty-two twenty-three. Michelle Rollins will introduce this item and it is a roll call vote. Thank you, Dr. Rollins.
So this comes to each year, it's called a tax anticipation note or what's called a TAM. And this is provided through education code four two six two zero. And it authorizes the Marin County Board of Supervisors to make a temporary transfer of funds to school districts if we experience any cash shortages. And how this works is that whatever interest that we have, they would charge negative interest. So as you know, interest rates have been quite low, um, in terms of our interest earnings. And so generally, um, if we do need to apply for negative, negative interest of, of these funds, it would generally happen in the timeframe of uh, October or November, because as you know, our property taxes post on December tenth. And then when we have our, once we have our first posting of um, property tax December tenth, we usually run, um, without any, uh, cash flow shortages. So, um, we do not anticipate having to dip into this, but it is a um, a, a resolution that we do recommend at the county level in the event that we do have any And so, uh, it is a roll call vote of resolution eighteen twenty-two dash twenty.
So any questions? I'm sorry, any questions or, or comments before we?
But hopefully they don't suddenly charge you market interest rates.
They will not.
This is still giving us like one percent.
Trustee Abdullah, do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. I.
Trustee Abdullah.
I.
Trustee you.
I.
Trustee cats.
I, I'm just not a I and I, I, I'm an I.
Wonderful, thank you. Now we're on to I two, resolution nineteen twenty-two twenty-three. EPA, Dr. Rollins, please introduce, and this is a roll
Call vote. Great, this is the approval of the projected twenty-three, twenty-four Education Protection Act. And this was voted upon by um, our voters under Prop thirty on the November sixth, twenty-twelve ballot. And so what we show is a projection of the Education Protection Act funds. And then you'll see in September of each year, we present the actuals. This is our climate posted on our website, which we do each year. And so this is a roll call vote and we are asking for a resolution nineteen twenty-two twenty-three.
Any questions or comments? We have a motion? Second?
President's in touch.
I.
Trustee Abdullah.
I.
Trustee you.
I.
Trustee cats.
I.
Both of these resolutions have submitted to the Marin County Office of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins. And now approval of the LCAP. And Dr. Berman will introduce this item.
Uh, we held a workshop regarding the LCAP at the end of May. We brought it forth for public hearing at the last meeting and tonight we asked for approval. Prior to approval of the budget, it is required by districts to approve the LCAP. Um, and I do believe we have a public comment before him.
Yes, we do. Gabby Dominguez, please, Gabby. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for all you do that in this all the time you work in the district. I work with you well, so. Well, I'm Gabby Dominguez. I'm, um, I have a third grade, uh, strawberry point. And I have some points in the LCAP that I, um, want to know because, um, from the last, uh, board meeting, it was really concerned to me that, um, some of the board members talk about their position in privilege with no, you know, but asking for providing the lunch and we have to use the money for the thing that we have. So it's concerning because if you see how that we have English learners, we have nineteen-six students. And well, uh, first to youth one, the social economic, uh, one thirty-seven and the students with disabilities, two hundred and fifty-two, we have a total of four hundred and eighty-six students. Right? And if you see with the CAPS testing results in math, the social economical and, and the, the students with disability, they, all of them scored twenty-four point nine below score and thirty-seven point one point below score. The English learners, uh, in math, they score four point two points lo- lower that, uh, the, the, all the, the kids. So uh, I think that, well, they already approved with the Leo and the math committee to have this for the kids. Because as you can see, if the real students are not performing well, all these kids that they really need the help and all the things that we have been working for so many years to adapt. And also is, um, when we talk about how you can have diversity, equally inclusive learning environments for all the things. Um, you can see that these kids are always in huge disadvantage. And I think that having facing history and facing ourselves is not enough, it's just instruction. And all the things that you have done, we start that, but I think that the whole district and teachers, They need to have like a common language so the kids can understand. Because if you just keep one thing over and over and over the years, yes, it's fine, it's a good introduction, but then what's going next? The things that are happening in our um playgrounds with all the kids, whether they are listening. What they are doing, they don't have a common language. And this is not going to be resolved if we don't have a common language that every single student or every teacher can have and teach. Yes, we have great. Um community events, but then what is the learning issue for the kids?
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this agenda item? Alright, so I'd like to open it up for. Any discussion? Discussion. I do want to um just articulate before we vote that um. I hear our constituents. Uh comments and I hear loud and clear alignment. I hear common language. And um embedding these things in in the classroom and I when I envision it, I I see it from. From the classroom all the way up to the board. So I'm very um thankful for her comments and and interested. With our new superintendent exploring how we might look at that more carefully.
And also our own actions, right? I I appreciate hearing that and I think we're all. Working and growing. I mean, one thing that we've heard that we've taken a position on to is like the um school supplies, like we recognize it. Yeah, sure, some kids may be able to afford that, but not all. And it is important that we. Are recognizing that our policies have to be reflective of every student and. We hear you on our words about school lunches and just making sure that we're not focusing on what might be a large majority, but we are. Making sure every student is feeling um i- is having their needs met and is feeling that. The decisions we make are considering them as well.
And I want to add too that, you know, the local control accountability plan LCAP often is looked at as a. Just kind of something you send to the state, but it really is a living document and can be teased at any time. So I think with the um strategic plan coming up for renewal, this is a great opportunity to have community members. Uh be part of stakeholder groups and really tease this out. So um. I thank the constituent for their comment. We have a motion to approve the LCAP. Second. All in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? Okay. Alright, now your business and financial matters, a proposed budget and adoption of the budget. Dr. Rollins, thank you again.
I am pleased to present the twenty-three twenty-four um budget for adoption. And um what I will say is that the board had a board study session on May. Where we discussed our current year budget and assumptions. And then we had a board uh meeting on May twenty-fourth where we reviewed the assumptions in alignment with the LCAP. And then last week on June seventh, the board saw a preliminary budget and we also had our public hearing. And there were no comments or changes from that. And so what we're bringing forward is the proposed budget for the adoption of the upcoming year. And the plan is for this to be submitted to the Marin County Office of Education. They review this and then it also goes to the state accountable. Yeah. So we are asking for approval of the budget in twenty-three twenty-four.
Yes, trustee usual to.
Uh I just have a quick.
Oh, okay.
Then I'm. Just with things like as COLA gets uh gets finalized, which I think they just uh decided to honor the eight point two-two. Same why, but I may have, I just skimmed my CSBA email. But as that gets finalized, as everything gets finalized within VTA. Obviously, all those numbers that are not accounted for in here because. They weren't finalized previously will be reflected um in upcoming a a future board meeting when we review. Budget and we'll see those numbers sure shift significantly.
First in room.
Correct. And it will, we may bring something to you August tenth. So once the state budget act is approved, there's generally um. Forty-five days where there are trailer bills and things like that. Anything that is material that impacts our district, we will bring forward um. Either through a budget or. And then thereafter, um as we discussed last week. The current preliminary budget does include the eight percent settlement grant for CSEA. It does not include anything beyond that because as you know, that it's pending board approval on June twenty-third. And so therefore there will be um changes that we will bring forward at the next budget meeting. It will likely be um the August meeting, if not September, but I think that we will. Um once we review Marin County Office of Education, we'll bring forth what's called a budget revision. Reflecting any changes as a result of the state budget act as well as the June twenty-third.
Trustee you, did you have something you wanted to say?
No.
Oh, you did. You made, yes, you did. Alright, a second. Alright, all, well, I have a a first emotion and a second. All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work, Dr. Rollins. Appreciate it.
That was a lot.
That was a lot. And now we're on to K, facilities. Measure G updates and agreements for ongoing architectural services, JK. And office and WRNS. Thank you.
Good evening. So I'm here tonight with um Sandrine Hetrock. He's with, she's with our team. She's our program manager. Um with AECOM. And so tonight we're gonna go over a a couple of items that we're requesting board approval for as well as give a measure G update. So are the first item is. The last meeting, we um the board approved to be able to move forward with contract with three vendors that um came about from our. Request for proposals and qualifications from our architect um. Architect procurement. And so three of those, the three vendors are JK Architecture and Engineering, Leonakis, WRNS Studio. And so tonight is part of our board meeting tonight is to request approval to. And have those three firms enter into our architectural pool. And what that gives us is an ability to assign them work. As it relates to our measure G project projects. So that's one of the first items on the list and as well as. We will be asking requests for approval for uh project assignment to Leonakis. Leonakis is the firm that. Our interview committee requ- um recommended to move forward for the middle school project. And so. This is gonna be our first step in the middle school project and it's really around feasibility. I'll let um. It's our feasibility setting, really take the initial steps that we need to do to be able to make that project come to fruition and I'll let Sandrine. Kind of add on to that. Um and then in addition to that, we will be a- asking for an approval for. For a, for the vendor, which is, sorry, I'm. Yeah, for safe funding for consulting services and the vendor's name is um Hancock Park in Delong. So that gives us the ability to, what's important is with state funding is to get in line, do all the applications necessary. So once we're ready. We can then get in line, which is a process within the state to be able to. Bring in the grant money for the district. And so that's gonna really help us to start that process and have them ready as we're looking to. Take advantage of state funds um that may become available and some that are available for within the state already. And so. Going into the measure G update, that's for tonight. And so what should be, what's expected to come to the board um starting in August is. Community, first thing is community outreach consultant. And that is um within the AECOM contract, there's. A set of funds available for community outreach and there's the will be bringing forward a vendor to be able to communicate with our different stakeholders. Whether it's staff, whether it's community, being able to make sure that all the priority one projects and measure G um. The updates, what's happening, being able to get feedback is um done in a concise and. So concise manner for the community and well-publicized through a dashboard and different elements that we're gonna be able to share out the information. And then as well as our goal is to come back with the request for approval for a lease leaseback um request for qualifications and um proposals. And that is what focus on the middle school um as well as our other projects is the building method. That we talked about in our study session in May, which really gives us the opportunity to. Bring in a contractor as well as an architect on the front end to be able to collaborate together. With the idea that you're minimizing errors and have have both sides working together for the better of the project. And then um in September and October, we'll be giving updates on the work that Leonakis Leonakis is doing as well as. Giving um project assignments for our other modernization work, which involves elementary schools. So for tonight, while I'll just go back to our initial um. Our initial approval request. And so that is for ongoing services for our three architectural firms with JK. Architecture, engineering, Leonakis and WRNS Studio.
Okay, open the board comments or questions? Okay, she gets the second, all in, all in favor.
I.
Opposed. Thank you. So that's number one, Kate.
You. Number two is our Leonakis um agreement, which is. Um where we're gonna be assigning them services now that they are in our architectural pool. And I'll let um Sandrine kind of go over what the scope of what we should expect from Leonakis in this phase of the project.
So um essentially this document, which is a project assignment, which is part of a master agreement assigns portion of the work. You affirm um what we are looking at right now, and that's based also on your feedback from previous board meetings. Is for the middle school, kind of looking at options, looking at a feasibility, conceptual phase where we can look at options. Uh so that's really the the project assignment tonight that we're asking you to approve is that, is that first phase, that first step, it is not the entire project. Um so that will allow us to start working with them in the district and the communities throughout the summer. Um and uh just like Julio was saying, our our hope is that coming back in September, October, we 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 will be able to present to you um. Some findings and uh. Have Leonakis actually present to you, uh so you can meet them. Um so that's, that's pretty much it.
Any questions or comments?
My question would be um. Uh for the project assignment, so it's just concept. So the next project assignment, it's not gonna go. It's not gonna go schematic and then DD and then.
You know.
More lump.
Our, our intent right now, because we have to define what the middle school project will be.
Yeah.
Um really, the intent of that first phase is to define what the scope of work is gonna be because right now and. We talked um with them to, it it would be really hard for them to. Give us a proposal for the entire project, not knowing what the scope of work is gonna be in the end. So uh that's the intent. That is our hope. At the end of this phase, we will ask for proposal for the entire project once we have direction.
Any other questions?
Uh when do they, sorry.
Please.
Oh, when do they, when will they start? Actually, like right away?
Soon as this, next week. If we sign it tomorrow.
Getting there all the agreements together. I would probably think like July first, when our sort of our fiscal year would probably make most sense, but yeah.
Yeah.
That's when we get everything set up and we'll probably do a kickoff.
And we intend to have a kickoff meeting.
Yes, yes, we will have a. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Somebody's trying to get an invitation.
So can I just clarify this?
Yes.
Motion to approve an ongoing architect services with Leonakis to develop feasibility study.
Yes.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Our second, all in favor?
I.
All the public. Alright, that passes. Thank you very much. Onto number three, agreement for state funding consultant services with Hancock Park and Delong.
Perfect. And I will let um Sandrine talk about kind of what the process will happen and just what to expect from this contract.
Sure. So uh if you recall at the beginning, we brought on board um this firm to do um to update the eligibility uh for the district. Um which we provided um a few, few weeks ago. Um this uh is essentially the big next step, right, is to start looking at um. The projects districts has done, looking into the details, starting the documentation and so that's phase one. And um submitting applications for the funds that are already here and available to the district. So that's phase one. Phase two is related to um uh. July twenty twenty-five eligibility, when the district, so when everything resets. And then starting working, and that's gonna be a little down the road, but working with us and depending on the design also of the middle school and the. The options and the direction we're taking, then starting working on that application to get the additional funding. Um so really two parts, we're looking at what we can have right now and what we can have in the future.
Any questions?
Um I asked and. I couldn't remember what the answer was. Is this being paid for through the bond or for, oh, fund, fund forty, that's what I was wondering. Never mind. Answer my question.
Answered your question? And you have first questions, trustee, another time?
No, that's it.
Alright, may I have a motion to approve? Um so. Second. All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Thank you very much for your. Next.
I just basically got to.
Yes, please.
Just tied to.
Board comments?
Yes, just very quickly tied to the comments around the placement enrollment. I, I would love to understand at some point in the future if it's a possibility to add into the registration process. Prioritization um so that like families can say, is proximity their top priority, is smaller class size? Or are there things that they don't care about? Because you can't make everybody happy, but um at least being able. Or to figure out, you know, who who you can place a little further away and it's not gonna make as much of a difference to um. May end up being really helpful and reducing the number of comments that we that we get in response. Um so some somewhere off in the far future, but um. That's it.
Those are thoughtful comments. We have them recorded, so we'll bring those forward. Any other board comments before we adjourn? And I know trustee. Abdullah has got a really important event to go. No, we have to adjourn, so please quickly.
Quick question. Are we in August, are we going to be talking about potentially adding a class if we have not worked in kindergarten? Is that uh to be discussed?
I feel like we should not create that impression at all because look at what it's created. That's my, I mean, that's my view. I don't know what I. I think in fact we should be very clear. We have no intention at this point with our vegetarian situation to add. Additional classrooms, like just so that there isn't that misunderstanding among us, the parent community. That's just my view. I don't know.
Thank you, trustee Bill. Yeah, well, and and Dr. Rollins, you want to add to that?
I would just say that. None of us have a crystal wall and we do find that there are a lot of cuts and drops after Labor Day. So even though we have a lot of registrations. Family situations change, our private school openings become available. It's very challenging for us to predict, but I think that the board has given the the direction. And um you know, I think we had a very good discussion specifically around universal transitional kindergarten. And what if we go beyond the compliance numbers? We will not receive any additional funding. So I think if that does occur, we can have a discussion, but I would agree that. There have been multiple discussions. The board has provided directions three times. And I think that we hold with what we have in terms of the information prior.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins. And with that, I'd like to adjourn this meeting at six oh one, six oh two. Alright, have a great summer, everybody.